I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu. Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gloss. Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise and float the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting's law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive sessions, discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening and welcome, everyone. We're going to start with the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, President Lacks, and welcome, everyone. Summer is fully underway, and we're excited to kick off our 2022 summer learning programs. Our dedicated staff welcomed 662 students in grades K through 12 to participate in the summer learning programs. All programs at Central Elementary School serve students in grades K through 4, and their programs run from 8:15 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. each day. Hammershold Upper Elementary School services students in grades 5 through 12 and runs from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The summer academic program focuses on foundational math and language art skills for students in our basic skills program throughout the year. The program serves 70 students at Central Elementary School and 96 students at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Our English as a Second Language, also known as ESL Summer Academy, provides our multilingual learners with enrichment experiences to strengthen their academic skills while supporting their English language acquisition. We are happy to have 74 students participating this summer at Central Elementary School and 49 students participating at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Our Extended School Year program focuses on preventing academic regression over the summer break as well as the continuation of social skills development. This program serves 378 students at Central Elementary School and 284 students at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Officer Reggie Wright visited our Early Learning Academy program for a Community Helpers Week as well as a visit from firefighter Rob Zalinski. Students have also been enjoying some water play in the courtyard and relaxing, believe it or not, with preschool yoga. We all should take preschool yoga. Our older students in the ELA program enjoyed their first full week of summer enrichment camps with fashion and sewing, and all of the children in our programs have a great start to a fabulous and fun summer. Through community programs, the district has also offered Saturday ESL classes for employees. In total, 12 Aramark employees enrolled and pre-tested so that we had a basis of their literacy level. And I'm happy to report that of the 12, eight employees successfully post-tested, and of those eight, six of those employees successfully increased their level of literacy by one level, and two of the employees successfully increased two levels of literacy. So this is a great program, and I thank Mr. Giuliani, who's also instrumental in getting that organized, to have our non-English language employees become more fluent with the language. It improves communication and improves their marketability even beyond, you know, what they're currently doing. So it's a great thing.
I'm sure their confidence level was increased. I've always found it fascinating, people that can come here and start an entirely new life with a new language and can function, because I'm not sure that I would be able to do that on a limited.
It's pretty impressive what some people do.
Yeah, it's incredible, so that's great that you helped them to do that. We helped them to do that.
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Before we begin, the Assembly of the East Brunswick Board of Education Ad Hoc Committee for a New High School is underway. Invitations will be sent to a variety of stakeholders in our community. The purpose of this committee will be to assess the desire and prioritization for features in a new 9 through 12 high school that would serve academic, athletic, artistic, and community use needs of East Brunswick for the next 50 years. The duration of the life of the committee is expected to be approximately six months. And I see Mr. Myers is here, so I am going to start with.
And Dr. Figaro.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Figaro. Look at that, I'm skipping right over you.
He is hiding behind Mr. Winston.
I'm skipping right over you. We're going to start with our health curriculum update.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, President Lacks. Tonight, I'd like to share with you comprehensive health and physical education curriculum updates for 2020. Now, before we begin, I'd like to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for your continued guidance, support, and leadership in creating outstanding learning environments for our children. Also, to Dr. Bowley and her team for their work on the curriculum, Mr. Meyer, my co-host for this evening, our supervisor of health and physical education. Well, I think we'd all agree that successful preparation for students, the 21st century rigor, must include a strong and sustained emphasis on health and wellness. Today's student is regularly bombarded with physical and social, emotional influences that not only affect learning but also affect health and wellness. To that end, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for a Comprehensive Health and Physical Education, or CHPE, were revised to address these needs. Now, the mission for the state was to allow students to have the knowledge and skills for good health and physical literacy, and for them to lead healthy, happy, and productive The key differences that you will see here, from 2014, there were six standards. The state reduced those in 2020 to three standards. The implementation of the new 2020 standards is required by September of 2022. The revisions focused more on issues and topics pertinent to students in 2022, as you see here. There are important statutes that continue to be reflected in the CHPE from 2014 and will remain in our curriculum. Some of these topics may be covered in school presentations or in assembly formats. So as I mentioned earlier, the standards from 2014 were reduced to three standards. These are the updated categories for standard one, and these are called disciplinary concepts. There has been some conversation over aspects of this standard, especially in the personal growth and development and social and sexual health areas. We will be breaking those down later on in a few minutes. As you see, standard two, physical wellness, there have been no major changes in this Standard three, no major changes or updates. The only differences would be to the availability of devices, for example vaping. That information has been updated in this area. So let's go back to standard one, as I mentioned a few moments ago, personal and mental health, and look at personal growth and development. What we have done is we've broken down the standard for you. Before we proceed, let me share with you that on April 14, 2022, the New Jersey Department of Education came out with a broadcast memo on CPH implementation. The memo reiterates that these standards are at the discretion of the local district to have the curricula that is aligned to the new standards that includes input from the community and educators. The state asks that the curricula is medically accurate and age-appropriate. Examples put in parentheses are suggestions and do not have to be implemented. So let's take a look at personal growth and development. By the end of grade five, the core idea is puberty is a time of physical, social, and emotional change. The performance expectation explains common human sexual development and hormones. Now, health teachers will facilitate this lesson with the assistance from the school nurse as needed. This lesson is taught at a time so students are aware and better prepared when these feelings and emotions occur. This preparation may prevent students from being at risk of bullying, isolation, and increased need for mental health supports. There is no change here to what we have been currently teaching our students. The topics in parentheses are suggestions. However, no specific acts are addressed at this age. A parent can request additional information or assistance from us about a specific topic if they need it. The other portion of standard one that needs some further clarity would be social and sexual health component. So here, by the end of second grade, the core idea is every individual is unique and should be respected, and the performance expectation is gender or gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. Now, these lessons will be facilitated by the classroom teacher, and the purpose is to teach students that anyone can do anything and to respect each other. There's no change to what we have been currently teaching our students here. Children typically develop an understanding of themselves and others during their elementary school years. This is a time when we dispel gender stereotypes and we focus on the child's overall growth, self-worth, and mental health. We want our children to understand that every person deserves respect and that we should treat each other in that way. Also, under social and sexual health, by the end of grade eight, core idea, factors that contribute to making healthy decisions about sex. The performance expectation focuses on the anatomy. There has never been and will not be explicit instruction about any specific sexual acts. This lesson will be taught to protect students from pressure, dating violence, and assault. Students should be able to accurately report instances of sexual harm or abuse. What we've done at the younger ages, also, we've talked about this before, good touch, bad touch. That's basically where this is coming from. So our curriculum addresses the standards appropriately while taking into account the input from the community and our educators. You can go to the next one. If you have any questions, please feel free to talk to your child's teacher, the principal, Mr. Meyer. You can even call my office, contact me for any further comment or discussion. What I'd like Mr. Meyer to do, if he would now, just come up and let parents know how we communicate information, not only the lessons but when they'll be taught and what the parents can do.
Thank you, Dr. Figaro, and good evening, everyone. Good evening, parents. So the communication process, the district procedure has always been to notify our parents and guardians of any type of sensitive topics that would be taking place during the health class. For example, we listed the puberty lesson. So in previous years, a note was always sent home to parents, making them aware of when that lesson was going to take place and giving them advance notice. So if they had any issues with that lesson, then they could contact the school. In our grades 5 through 12 now, as our fifth graders have moved up to Hammershold, we use different learning management systems, Google Classroom and Canvas. And so all of those particular lessons are already preloaded into those learning management systems, so parents have the ability to see what's coming down the road for their students so they can see what they're learning. And so Google Classroom is for Hammershold students, and Churchill and the high school will use Canvas. And our teachers that teach the health topics, they understand that these are sensitive topics, some of the items that they're talking about, so they are more than willing to meet and discuss any type of thing that's going to be happening in that lesson with you as parents. So they are sensitive to that nature and are more than willing to explain anything that's going to happen during those lessons. At that point, if a parent or guardian still feels uncomfortable with the topic of a lesson that's being taught, the state statute that's up here on the board allows parents to exempt their students from that particular lesson. And that's no penalty to the student, and we just simply ask that the parent would submit something in writing to the principal so that we would know what lesson to remove them from.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I would like to again thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for allowing us to speak on the CHPEs tonight, and I'd like to ask if there's any questions.
Mr. Carr.
Thank you for a great presentation, guys. I may be a little naive, but by the end of fifth grade, what does that mean? Are they learning about masturbation in second grade?
No, there's no specific acts that we're talking about, but what that means is during the course of their, during that course of the curriculum and the lessons, at that point, they would be aware of what that is. By fifth grade.
So this is going to be in fifth grade, not in second?
No.
And I have one more. Same scenario regarding the end of eighth grade, we're not going to all name a set. So elaborate a little bit on that.
That's more on the anatomy, and that would be in eighth grade. And that's, again, to protect students. They're not doing this in fourth, fifth, or sixth, no. Now, as they get older, there'll be more discussion in ninth, 10th, and 11th, 12th grade, but for at that point, it's really about anatomy to keep kids safe so that they are aware, should there be something occurring in their lives.
A little bit more.
Can I just mention something, Mr. Carangelo? Dr. Figaro, I think we need to emphasize that what the board members are seeing, the language you're seeing in the document is from the DOE document. Those are not our words that we're putting.
And nothing has been changed.
On our curriculum side, we essentially have not changed anything.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
Ms. Becker. Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. I wanted to just reiterate that because there was so much misinformation going around. And as parents, we need the right information so that we can go about our life and send our kids to school with that ease and comfort level that we need to have. So I was particularly pleased to see that there was a very emphatic, there is no change to what we have been currently teaching our students. What changed is the standards, if I have this correct, as stated by the DOE. And if you read, if you go on a website for the core curriculum standards for any subject, what it does is it breaks it down by grade, and the very last page of that set of standards, it basically tells you the state's expectation of what the child will have mastered in that grade by the end of the year, the expectation, if you will. So for math in third grade, what components of the curriculum there is addition or subtraction, percentages, fractions, it will clearly state that. So I think what happened is that that focus was misplaced because that's what the state talked about, the mastery of the standard. But as the important takeaway, as Dr. Figaro said, as Dr. Valeski just said, we're not changing anything. So that's the important takeaway.
Ms. Becker, I would 100% agree with you. I think what happened when the standards had come out, there were curriculums that were developed elsewhere that had people, you know, very upset. We are not adopting anyone else's curriculum. We have our East Brunswick curriculum that has hit the standards where they need to be in an appropriate and age-appropriate level, and that's what we will continue to do.
It's also, again, it's format. If you have the time to Google core curriculum standards, whether in New Jersey or national, they're written in a very strict repetitive format. What the standard is, the grade that it will be introduced, and the expectation of what that child will know from that standard, the skills they will have mastered from that standard by the end of that school year in that grade. So this is basically following the formality of standards for every single grade, every single subject. The focus, again, became misplaced because the subject matter is sensitive and because there were districts who were like, oh, great, now we have to develop a health curriculum. Well, we have one. And again, as we have said, there is no change to what we have been currently teaching our
Mr. Sizmar, thank you, Ms. Becker.
Thank you for the presentation. Although I do appreciate brevity, there's more than one core idea and performance standard in each of the grade levels. Can you tell me why we're limited to one instead of talking about all of the core ideas and expectations?
Sure. Mr. Sizmar, the only changes that have really made a big difference in terms of time, 2022 standards versus 2014, were in that standard one, in those two areas that we talked about. The state has also agreed that those are the two areas that people were most concerned about. As I mentioned to you, standard three, I'm sorry, standard two, or three, I'm sorry, the safety piece that does discuss different devices that are out now, as I mentioned, vaping is an example, so that is really the only change there. This standard one and those two areas were the two areas that had the most change and the change that was most concerning to most people at this time, as Ms. Becker had pointed out. I think there are townships that went right out to purchase curriculum or to work on different curriculum that we don't have to do. We have our own curriculum that does meet those standards, and we will continue to do what we have been doing.
I'll take grade five for a second. There's a course standard there. It says all individuals should feel welcome included regardless of their gender, gender expression, or sexual orientation. Our fifth grade thing, like I said, it focused on the one thing, so that's something that has changed. This is from the 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Not to be confrontational here, but to say our curriculum hasn't changed, I got a little issue with that right now. The glossary of terms almost doubled in the state learning standards in the social and sexual health category. It's up to 45 definitions, 20 of which deal with gender identity. I'm not the most learned person anymore, I'm getting older, but there are terms in here I've never heard of prior to 2020. So I guess my question right now is, how can the glossary be almost doubled just in that one category, and we haven't changed any of our lesson plans? Are we not including all these new definitions?
There are changes, as I said before, there are more gender discussions, more sexuality as you go into, further into the curriculum, into ninth, 10th, you know, as the students get older. The main purpose for today was to really dispel those concerns for our second, fifth, and eighth grade students, which I can understand, having a fifth and an eighth grader next year in schools, I was well concerned as a parent, to make sure that there was nothing that was so different in those areas that we had had in the past. And that is what we're doing tonight. We're trying to show that there really is no major difference. There are some additional, as I mentioned, the eighth grade standard talks about the anatomy, so there are additional pieces in the anatomy, again, to keep kids safe, to make sure kids understand, you know, good touch, bad touch is what we talk about with the younger grades, but also more explicit areas of the body so that they're aware, so that about their own body, but we're not talking about individual sexual acts or anything of that nature.
So again, get back to the glossary. So these 20 terms, they're not going to hear them in second grade, they're not going to hear them in fifth grade, if I do a review of the curriculum.
Yeah, I can't speak to the terms you're looking at at this moment.
I'll read a couple. Cisgender, intersex, non-binary.
No, they're not covered in the younger grades.
Transgender.
Yeah, that's not going to be covered in second.
They will not be covered in second or fifth or.
Well, if a student has a question, if a student comes up in class and asks a question that is not part of the curriculum, the teacher has the ability to say, well, that's a good question, let me get back to you, or speak to the child. Again, I can't tell you what the answer would be because I don't know the question. But if it's something that may not be appropriate for the group, the teacher can also have assistance from either the nurse, the student assistance specialist, contact the parent to talk about, you know, whatever the subject matter may be at that particular question. But it's not something that's in our curriculum that we're going to be discussing in second and fifth grade.
We have a lot of questions, just for fairness. No, 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 you're absolutely fine. I'm going to make sure everyone's questions are answered, just for fairness, if it's okay. I know Mr. Hong had, and I'm sure people on this side have questions. So, no, no, you're absolutely fine. We're going to let everyone ask a question, and then please feel free to ask as many as you want. We'll move on to Mr. Hong.
So again, thank you very much for the information. So my concern is, since the parents is provided the opt-out right without risking their students' grade, so my question is, how can we help the parents to make the informed decision before the class even started? Are we going to provide the parents with the material we're going to teach in that term so the parents can make the decision of the students out before the class even begins? So how can we do that?
So the topics are listed in the Canvas assignments that the parents can view, so if they would like to see or talk to the teacher about that particular material, that's the way that we've handled it in the past. We can certainly make, so all of the curriculum will be online for them to review, but if a particular parent wants to know more about a particular topic, we can certainly make what's available. And that's why we want them to be able to have a conversation with their teacher first because they'll be the ones that are delivering the content.
Okay, thank you.
Any folks on this side of the table? Mrs. Gloss.
I just wanted to say, I was listening to what Mr. Sizmar was reading as an area of concern. Mark, I don't have the piece open in front of me, the part you read about with the list of students making all feel welcome in the classroom. Could you read that again?
Which part?
You read a piece about, it had a list of different terms and then making all children feel welcome in the classroom, or all feel welcome.
I didn't read any core standards.
The glossary terms, I believe.
Lou read it about all children feeling welcome.
Oh, okay. Hmm? You're asking for the glossary terms you mentioned?
No, he had read something before that he was asking about. I just, I feel.
That wasn't me.
I'll go back later and figure out what it was when we re-watch. I just, I feel that our teachers do an excellent job, that all of our students, I would be horrified to think that any of our students ever felt unwelcome in the classroom, or that they didn't feel that their families were acknowledged or as valid as a family next to them. I think in a community that is religiously very diverse, that is culturally very diverse, that this diversity needs to be acknowledged as well, and that all children should feel welcome and safe in the classroom. So I can't imagine that that needs to be new here. Our staff is excellent, our community is very, very diverse, and I think our staff has always addressed this. I have three students in the district. My son is a, I can't believe I'm saying this, he's about to be a senior, and I don't know how that happened so quickly, he was just at Memorial. But I'm looking over these things, and I'm like, I remember this lesson. And I remember this lesson not because it was sent to me before it was taught in ninth grade, but because my son came home and wanted to talk about it. And as a parent, I have great communicative children. I don't think, probably because I'm a high school teacher as well, but I don't think they hesitate to come to me. But I think without the things that were being taught in the health class, without that, I don't think those conversations would have happened. And they were definitely necessary for their understanding, they were necessary for safety. Had the same conversations with my daughter after her ninth grade year, and I was grateful that it was started and bubbling around in his head. He didn't, he wasn't aware his peers felt so, in such different ways, he wasn't aware his peers were so unin- He wasn't aware his peers were so uninformed for their own safety. He was talking about, you know, people not realizing things. And some terms, I mean, you've listed off from the glossary, Mr. Sizmar, you're talking about cisgender, that's just someone who identifies as exactly the gender they were born as. And that's not a controversial, that would be most, most of what you've recognized most of your life, I would think. It's just the appropriate term at the moment. So I don't, giving them the terms, the terms are out there. But I, I'm looking at these lessons and I'm smiling because I remember when they went through these conversations, you know, we did this in class today. And it was also largely about learning about how his peers had different worldviews, had different points of view, had different understandings, which I thought was really valuable because he just, I don't think we would have had those conversations otherwise, and I don't think we would have understood the kids around him nearly as well. I don't see any huge changes to the curriculum, having had children just pass through it or passing through it currently. And I'm grateful for the parts that make all students feel welcome, they should. And thank you for the presentation, it was excellent.
I'm going to respond to that. President Lax, if I'm going to be addressed by a Board of Ed member directly, I'm going to respond, please.
Okay, can we just, let's, let's, I, I understand, but let's just.
You should understand, because why, why am I being, basically, no, no, no.
Her opinion, I don't think she was.
It wasn't an opinion, she said, Mr. Sizmar, you know, about the cisgender and this and that. That was not what I had said, and I need to respond to that.
Okay, if you could just let the other board members ask some questions, if you would like to come back. As I said, I'm going to come back to the board members multiple times.
Then I'll make a suggestion. We're not supposed to address other board members, we're supposed to address the public.
Okay.
Not, not to directly address other board members, basically questioning what I had said. That's in our bylaws.
Okay, point taken, I, I appreciate that.
Mrs. Reese, I think.
So I, if I understand it correctly, the parents can, oh, thank you. The parents can look online and see the lessons ahead of time at, at any particular level, second, fifth, eighth. Is that, is that correct? Am I understanding correctly?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not so sure about second grade. And a lot of the topics at second grade are basic topics like hand washing, hygiene, things like that.
Okay.
Once we get into fifth grade and we start using those learning management systems, those are available, I can double check.
Yeah, I think the concern is from the elementary school parents more so than if, if I'm reading the room correctly, than the middle school and the high school parents. Similar to.
Dr. Bowley may have.
Oh, good.
All of our curriculum is online.
All of it's online.
Yeah, yeah.
So you could look at anything you want, right, as a parent?
That's correct, yes.
Because I, I, I respect that, you know, I also have children in the district. You know, my son just graduated, which is.
You have more kids?
I have one more, I have one more. And I have a boy and a girl, so I've seen it from different perspectives. And I have to say, thank you again, the, the way that you present the material, making people feel heard, that they're not alone, is actually a lesson that the whole world probably should take. And if we can teach the kids to respect each other at an earlier age, perhaps we wouldn't have half of the problems that we have in the world. I'm looking for the next generation to hopefully help us with that. But you, you folks are doing that here, the health teachers are excellent. But I totally understand parents being concerned. And I understand that on TV, we see a lot of things that scare us or maybe concern us as parents, that we don't want that to happen here. But I, I don't see that happening here. And I do think it's excellent that we get that letter also at the upper grades. If, you know, this is what we're going to be teaching, if your child doesn't want to take part in this, you know, and, and, and that's fine. And there was, I think some parents had said last time, and I see the concern, well, if my child misses this lesson, they're going to know about it, and my kid's not going to know. And I, I could understand that. But what we're seeing is that the lower grades, this is not the material that's going to be covered, right? So if you were telling the kids to, you know, respect each other, care for each other, be kind to people who are different than you, that, you know, again, that's important material that probably a lot of adults might need to learn too, right? So we all have, in, if you look at the news today, right? So I think, I think that's important. But I just, I want parents to feel comfortable, we all want parents to feel comfortable. We all, you know, we may say it differently, but that's our purpose here is that there's a, a cooperation between the teachers who do the, and yourselves and the administration and do the professional work. And, and like Ms. Becker said, and, and so well, is that we're here to, to help make that happen. But I really do have a lot of confidence in our professionals here. Our teachers are excellent, right, our administrators are excellent. Nobody's looking to, you know, somehow sneak in material that isn't age-appropriate and to teach them things that are scary for them at that age. That's not our purpose here. You, no, that's the, the parent makes decisions. But I'll tell you this, things that my mom thought happened, she, my mom is 80 years old, and she found out things the wrong way. And she thought things, crazy things. She thought she could get pregnant if she sat in the car with a boy in her bathing suit. Probably going to be upset I said that. But, but it's important to say these things because unfortunately, it is important to discuss things, and God forbid someone's, you know, being hurt, hurt somewhere outside school, and they don't know how to report it, and they're ashamed. And nobody's talking about, and they have no way to report that. You folks do that. You make it so that it's okay to come out and say something privately to the teacher, to the administrator. So 100%, we should continue to talk about it, keep it open. But just, I hope we put it in the perspective, right, that this is important work, and not to be scared of this important work. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Winston.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions, really, and, and a couple of observations. You know, I'm looking at the East Brunswick curriculum, on all three of these, I, I have to tell you, my concern is probably counterintuitive, but they are so vanilla, watered down and mundane that I'm having a really tough time believing that this is going to be delivered. I know the intent is there, but I also know what the publicity around this, and I also know what the state published, and I know that most of the teachers that I've spoken to have read it. And that, that kind of opens the door a little bit, far beyond the 16 or so words that are, that are describing the intent. That's the comment. You had said that no acts would be, would be spoken about. And by the end of eight, uh, grade eight, you do mention the focus will ensure the student have agency over their own bodies and to provide them with the language that will empower them to stay safe. Stay safe from what?
From abuse, from harm.
And how will they know that, that, and, and they'll have to define that by an act, true?
What, what it is, is that we're teaching, the, the anatomy piece on eighth grade has progressed a little bit, as you've seen. So it's knowing your parts of your body and good touch, bad touch, where people should or should not touch you, abuse, any, any kind of, you know, physical or sexual abuse, that they'd be able to, be able to speak about it in, to someone, and be able to really tell them exactly what's happening.
Then I'm surprised that's in eighth grade. If that's your definition, and you're teaching good touch, bad touch, don't touch anything.
Good touch, bad touch, we, we teach in the younger grades, it's, it's.
I'm only in on eighth, I'm staying on eighth grade right now. In eighth grade, you write that you're, the bodies and to provide them with the language that will empower them to stay safe. I don't know how you can have that without talking about vaginal, oral, and anal sex by eighth grade. Explain to me how you're going to explain safety without having that subject discussed.
Well, you're asking me if the, the anatomy piece will be discussed, absolutely. And when I mentioned about no specific acts that will be discussed, doesn't mean that if there's questions, concerns, and I, and I also mentioned that at the younger grades as well. We're not talking, I think it was, uh, grade five has certain suggestions in parentheses that we're not.
Not doing those, I understand.
I understand, but I want to make sure, so it's a progression, Mr. Winston? It's a progression as the kids go up? We're not saying good touch, bad touch to an eighth grader. That's something that they've learned younger. But now we're actually saying here, the explicit piece of the body, this is so you understand, you know, what's happening and where it's in the body that may be, or something may be occurring, if there's something that is wrong or some type of abuse that may happen. They have to be able to discuss it with someone at that level so that they can explain exactly what might be happening to them.
Then, I appreciate the answer. Then the last concern is, goes under the category of much ado about nothing. So am I to understand that in spite of everything that I've read that has come down from the state, including the list that Mr. Sizmar had, had just read, and everything else, East Brunswick essentially turning their nose up to and say, what we got is fine, we don't need to acknowledge the DOE's recommendations?
Well, if, if I could, Mr. Winston, I, I think in order to add some clarity directly to your question, in the last month, all of the Middlesex County superintendents had a meeting with DOE about this very topic. Each superintendent from Middlesex came with stories of concerned parents at their board meetings, asking specific questions about these new standards. We were all told by the acting commissioner of education, it is your discretion. First of all, we asked that the, the standards be deferred. We asked for a continuation of the standards, that was denied. We were told standards are going to be implemented September of 2022. And the commissioner said, you superintendents have complete discretion in how you do it in your community.
Okay.
And, and so we all took that away from that meeting, saying we're going to look at our own programs, our own curriculum, and we looked at ours and said, we're doing everything that we need to do inside of our own curriculum, and that's what we'll do. And if we're challenged by the state later on, then I'll defend it with what the commissioner told all of us.
You know what, that's the best answer I've heard so far in this, of this entire day. That is vital, and if that's the agreement that's, that's.
That's the agreement.
It's come to, hopefully it's come to you in writing, because I say that this is a severe departure of the documentation that I read prior to this information. Last I read, I, what second graders were going to be learning is stuff that I didn't teach my 11th grader. So, you know, that's where the concern came.
I can tell you it was not in writing, but if this was a Zoom link between the commissioner and all of us. So if they recorded that, but in that meeting was the executive county superintendent, and I would say the vast majority of the Middlesex County superintendents.
I applaud the effort then. If you're going to keep what I didn't want out, which appears that you've done, I'm fine. I wish this came through curriculum first, I will say that. But that aside, offline.
Mr. Sizmar, I'm going to just go down the line again.
Dr. Vlesky, thank you. That is sort of what we're looking at, and why parents are so concerned. So your answer was incredible, thank you.
Mr. Hung, did you have anything else? Okay, Mr. Sizmar, I know you're waiting patiently.
Hi, thank you. I didn't think what I said needed clarification, but the reference to the core ideas, and if I did read any of those core ideas, was the fact that there was one in each of the grade levels. And I said there is five bullet points in grade two, three in grade five, and three in grade eight. I didn't think that needed to be clarified. I take issue when I brought up the glossary terms. The glossary terms were, I found it hard to believe that in 2014, there was probably about 23 or so glossary terms, I don't know the exact number. It's doubled. And my point with reading the ones that are new is because prior to 2020, I had never heard of some of these terms. And I've been involved in education a pretty long time. When you said you don't find them to be controversial, good, because I don't find them to be controversial either. I want our children educated. The comments towards me, I said it before, I don't think they were appropriate, and I hope I've clarified what I said before. A lot of what's going on here is, we've been talking about this for months. There's some individuals in the audience that have been coming to every meeting, thankfully, concerned parents, for months. We were told by the administration, and I'm going to be a little critical here, that we are working on the health curriculum, we are working on the health curriculum. Several months later, we're sitting here and get a document that says there's no changes to what we're currently teaching our students. Do you see the disconnect here? You know, we, i- if this was true, the administration could have said that six months ago. We're not changing grade two, we're not changing grade five. Most of my focus, my personal focus, was the younger children. I believe Mr. Winston was, was saying something along those lines. Teaching them terms, let's provide, let's keep our youngest innocent. They don't need to learn certain things. That's my passion behind this. That's why I get concerned when there's three to five different core ideas and requirements. And in the presentation, like I said, in its brevity, only showed one. It's not to be, I, I respect Dr. Figueroa and the entire staff, very much so. But there are questions, and questions need to be answered. And I would say, I, I'm going to go review the curriculum too, I'll, I'll hold the rest of my questions. That's, that's, that's the next, that's the focus there, is keeping our youngest innocent. You know, they get enough of it from this, sorry, garbage that's out there on social media. We need to protect our children, and that's my point. And yeah, I guess there are terms that, that would be controversial at a second grade level that aren't in the high school, you know? So that's, that's how I'm going to wrap up my comments is, and, and I'll be doing more of my research. Like I said, I, I pulled the 2020 standards, the 2014 New Jersey student learning standards. And again, it's not to be super critical of the administration, but I also have to do my job up here, is we're supposed to make sure that the district is being run well. And I'm going to go over the research and the numbers. I'll let it rest for today with faith in, in what you've told us, but that's all I say, we just got to protect our youngest. So I'll end on that note, thank you.
If, if I could, just, just a clarification because of Mr. Sizmar's observation. And, and point taken, sir, well, I, I understand the concern. The, the purpose of the meeting, the superintendents with the Department of Education regarding these new standards was for us to secure clarity from the Department of Education. And I, I'm going to be very frank, we were, we were given none. We were told there is no, nothing else we're going to do for you, these are the standards. And then we said, your communication essentially has fallen short of anybody's expectation because people in the public are up in arms about what potentially will come in September of '22. There are people who have posted things online, and people have gotten, they've gotten traction with certain groups. And people believed, as Dr. Figueroa had, had revealed, that there were curricula that had been designed and were going to be sold to districts, or they were designing things for districts that were going to be implemented. And there are probably some districts, in fact, there were districts that adopted some model curriculum that was designed outside of that district by other agencies. And so that got some press back two years, maybe a year before the pandemic, when this first started to circulate. But our purpose really was to get clearly, clarity from DOE. And when they said, essentially go back and use your discretion to implement, then we looked at our curriculum, our review, and said, this is going to meet the standards. And if the state decides to challenge us, my basis for defending that will be going back to the education commissioner with the executive county superintendent's eyewitness, saying, we did this based on a curriculum we had already designed, and it meets the standards.
Hey, can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Just, I'll end at that, I, I wanted to add four. And I do defend you on that, and I do have problems with the state. The bill is, A is in Alpha 4454, and it explicitly states that the state would give sample lessons and resources. And it kind of sounds what you're telling me right now is, they fell short again.
Exactly.
You know, the, this is, this is, this is, again, I'm, I'm more upset with the state than I am with the administration. You know, they come out with these standards, and it says right in the law, anybody can read the law, that's, that's the number, that the state is going to provide guidance, sample lesson plans. Basically, and then you get ungot, and it's, you know. So I, you know, I, I understand, like I said, I might have sounded critical of the administration, but it's just, it's a very sensitive topic. And, you know, the state, again, makes, make these, and the mandates are, there's some stuff in there that's questionable. So thank you for your efforts, and thank the county superintendents for coming together.
Mrs. Becker.
Thanks. So first of all, about the state. I remember the first or second year of the pandemic, when we were trying to figure out what the options were going to be for graduation. We started getting recommendations, requirements, qualifications from the state. And they took this, this very simple concept of a graduation. And yes, it was complicated of how to hold it during a pandemic situation. But I remember looking. how to hold it during a pandemic situation. But I remember looking at like a 10-page document, paragraph 23, section 2, paragraph F, line 37. It was incredible. Somewhere buried in these 10 pages, we were sure they were trying to tell us what parameters we could use. But actually, it turned out that they weren't. There was no direction. It was just 10 pages of rhetoric. So that's always a challenge with the state. Very quickly, I had a conversation, a parent called me in the late spring. She had been watching some board members, board meetings, and had read things in the paper. And she was struggling to process all of this. And she came up with, she said, you know, when I was a kid, we used to say, sticks and stones don't break your, break your bones, but names will never hurt me. And she said, I think what I realize is, I want my kids to have an understanding of all these things that children hear and see in movies, the media. They are exposed to so much more at a young age than we ever were. I want them to understand it, because I don't want them to use words that they don't understand to hurt someone else. And I don't want them to be afraid of words. And I, I kind of thought that she, she came to a good conclusion, because with ignorance, I think, comes fear. And I don't like the fact that our children are exposed to things at such an early age because of social media, because of 800 cable channels, and, and movies geared for children which deal with adult themes. And I think the, her struggle was resolved as, if my children understand what these terms mean, they won't hurl them at somebody else as a way of hurting them. That they'll understand it, and they also won't be afraid. Because I think all this bombardment on children, even on adults, it's scary. And I agree with her. I agree that knowledge is always a powerful tool that we can use to combat fear. And the difference, she was saying, bad touch, good touch, the difference between hurting someone, even inadvertently, because she don't understand the term you're using. So I just, I, that conversation stayed with me. And I just wanted to share the thoughts of another parent as she was trying to work through it. That's what I had to say.
Yeah. Great discussion. You have, I'm sorry?
Lovely.
I'm sorry?
Lovely. That was great.
You love me?
I
I'm a little hard of hearing.
We discussed that later on in the curriculum.
If this is, if this is going to be a proposal, I just want to be prepared.
Yeah.
But with saying these terms and understanding them and using them appropriately or not as a weapon, we don't want anyone to persuade our children into anything.
No. Oh, God, no.
I'm not saying you are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's appropriate. But I'm saying, we don't want, and I think that's what parents are trying to get at, too, is like, and that's my comment, is how do we assure this is being taught the proper way and not persuading? Because I've been, I've seen it personally with someone I know, personally, he's been persuaded with words.
Right.
So I just, that's sort of it. And I commend everyone here.
Yeah, if we, if we provide the knowledge, then they can't use the word as either a form of persuasion, a weapon, a way to hurt someone.
I'm talking about adults.
Oh.
I'm talking about adults persuading the children.
Oh, yeah. Not my understanding that was the intent of our curriculum.
No, I know that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, Dr. Figueroa.
Very welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I thought I was getting a proposal.
Megan has waited, I don't know how you're going to follow this one up. I hope that you're having a wonderful summer, getting ready for your senior year.
I wish I burned water.
I forgot who, but I heard someone else say their kid is a rising senior. And that's, yeah, I feel the same way. I feel like I was wore sore for yesterday. But, okay. So we're three weeks into summer break. I think everybody's just relaxing, especially for the rising seniors. College App's coming up. It's pretty busy. Some activities are still going on at the high school. I was at the high school this morning for a club meeting, and it was three hours long and super hot. But, you know, it is what it is. Huh?
Verbalis?
Yes, that one. We go like three days a week. Yeah, we're always there. And fall sports, I think, should be starting, practice and stuff in August. So everyone's getting ready for that. But besides that, I think everyone's just caught up with sports, summer homework, work, stuff like that. But, yeah.
Well, I'm so impressed with you coming out for the summer months, because I don't remember in the past, I think a lot of the students take off the summer months, because I know there's not a lot to report. So Megan, this is a great start to your
I'm not on vacation, so I might as well be here.
I still, you know what? I think it's great, and I love that you're giving us a perspective of what goes on in the hot high school halls in the summer.
She just came over from aerobics. She just walked over.
I've been there all day since the morning.
Well, thank you. Okay, this brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Public participation is an opportunity to engage, is not an opportunity to engage in a dialogue with the board, but a chance to share your thoughts. I always like to remind you of that. Participation will be limited to three minutes duration. And any follow-up, if there's a conversation that you're going to be having, it's going to be one-way. So any follow-up that you may want or desire, you will see Karen and Janet, I think it's the third row, in the back. If they don't already have your information, please, before you leave, make sure they have it. That being said, I would invite anyone from the public that would like to come and address the board. Come on down. And if you would just say your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, Kelly Callahan, 94 Independence Drive. I didn't really prepare anything today, but I did want to say thank you to the board members for the presentation, because obviously that's why I've been coming here. All of these meetings is just to get clarification. And I really appreciate not only the presentation, but the feedback from many of the board members, asking questions that I had myself. There was a lot more clarification. I feel like even within the questions, just on top of the presentation, I appreciate the clarification from Dr. Valesky about the superintendent's meeting with the supervisor, or whatever, the NJ DOE. And I, when I had initially started looking into it, obviously, there was a lot of alarm based on the curriculums that other towns had adopted. And I understood that that's not what we were doing. My concern came solely from what Mr. Sizmar is reading, which is the state guidelines. So having the understanding that, one, the things in parentheses aren't, you know, exactly mandated, understanding that we've been given a lot more flexibility, and this is what we're doing, gives me a lot more comfort. I think that the next step for parents, especially me, would be to talk directly to my principal and get more direct, just lines of, you know, this is lesson plan, this is a video, because I want to stay informed on what my kids are learning, and not necessarily, you know, I appreciate Mrs. Beckler's comment, or Becker's comment about the woman who spoke to her. But I also believe that that's one parent's opinion. And I don't choose to keep my children ignorant in any way. I just believe the way that each parent chooses to address certain terminology or certain topics is a difference across the board. And the way that I would introduce this to my children is probably a lot different than the way that it may come across in a lot of things that are out there right now. So I just appreciate the respect of having this presentation and a lot of the commentary that came from the board. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with a And again, when you get up there, your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, it's Vama Aurora, and it's for Red Coat Drive.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Vama Aurora.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm going to sort of change the topic of what the meeting was currently. And I'm a student of East Brunswick High School. I'm in my 10th year. And I'm actually in my 11th year this summer. Okay. So there has been a lot of talk among students where, about the recycling in specifically East Brunswick High School, and how we don't necessarily recycle, even though we have the bins, they go into the same place. And another concern that I've seen all throughout my years here, I've been here since kindergarten, has been the food wastage, especially since last year, we had free meals. A lot of kids are just taking things that are required in their meals, and they're inevitably, they're just going to throw it out. And I think that's a huge problem, because we should not be wasting so much food. We should start, you know, appreciating that. And we should start looking more towards the sustainability of the school, the environmental impact of the school. Because things are definitely really scary right now when it comes to scientific data. And we look at like climate change, we look at other environmental impacts. So I think maybe more clarity as to what the status is on that, on recycling, and the food wastage would be really great for not only staff, most of the students as well.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Happy summer to everybody. Alex Peelman, 6 Douglas Road. I just want to say, that was a fantastic presentation of everything that was going on with physical and health. And that was far more information than I expected to be getting. I found it was fantastically informative in what happened, what we're going to be seeing. The only thing I was thinking, I'm not sure if this is currently going on, but is with the curriculum, but when I saw the things that maybe you talked about in eighth grade, which was the anatomy and things like that, is to definitely, since we're talking about, you know, much more specific things within that period of time, you know, I was thinking, going back, like, if you're graduating at 18, by eighth grade, you're about 14. So I was really thinking about age consent, you know. Age consent is 16, but that's a flexible scale depending on the situation. It can go down to 13 in certain situations, but it can also go up to 18, permitting there are, not exactly exact signs on those things. But I'm not sure if that is currently reinforced within those lessons, but definitely that may be something to consider to be put in there, so that, you know, as children are getting older, they're developing relationships, that they know that these things are there to protect them from any type of predatory things. Because, you know, we've had situations, not in this district, but in other districts, where, you know, we talk about how people would take advantage of their students through unsavory means and things like that, you know. So, you know, keep the children innocent as always, you know, be a advocate for them as, you know, stick your neck out, and protect them from anything that may happen, both at home and abroad. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and move on to our Board of Agenda, Board of Education Agenda. Before I ask for a motion to combine Board of Education Items 1, 2, and 3, is there anything that needs separating out? Okay, then may I please have a motion for Items 1, 2, and 3 on the Board of Education Agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Hong. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, with an abstention on number three.
Noted. Mr. Hong?
Oh, oh, oh.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, and I think that Mrs. Becker also needs to abstain.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I forgot to abstain on item number three. I was with Mark.
Noted.
Get too worried about my proposal.
Hey, Bernie. Bernie, I need to vote. I hardly missed
I mean, I'm a yes, but
I admit, oh my goodness. Mrs. Gwas?
Yes.
I am so sorry. I got thrown off with Mrs. Becker.
I know, right? I'm sorry.
Don't blame her. Yeah.
I hardly missed board meetings. I forgot what to do.
That's very funny. Okay, well, that passes, thanks to Mrs. Gwas. So may I please have a motion for items, there's only one item on the committee program. It's moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Carrangelo. Is there any discussion?
Here.
Yes?
Yes. So, so by the data from U.S. Department of Labor, therefore, 12 months ending May 2022, their food away from home has increased 7.4%. So the air market only increased 3.75%. So I really appreciate, this is very friendly number. But I want, just want the administration team to now just focus on the price. Let's put more attention on the food quality and the food safety, to make sure when we enjoy its good price, we enjoy the quality and service at the same time. That's all.
Okay. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Bringing us to facilities. Is there any item that needs separating out in facilities? Then I will ask for a motion for Items 1 through 3 of our facilities budgets. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Carrangelo. Is there any discussion? Has a question? Yes. Could you just elaborate, or could someone elaborate on the courtyard project at Lawrence Brook?
Mr. Giuliani.
Certainly. So the courtyard project involves a redo of the access courtyard, which is used for student entry from bus drop-off. The courtyard, over the years since Lawrence Brook was expanded, has deteriorated somewhat. We want to make it a more usable space, not for instructional purposes, but also just for students to be able to have a place outside that isn't a contained area, but be able to go outside and enjoy the space. We've been very fortunate in this particular case, because this was a project that we had postponed due to finances. And we were approached by a family that wanted to make a donation in memory of a former staff member, of a long-term staff member that had been working at Lawrence Brook School. That family donated $95,000 toward this project. So we're thankful to the family that they were acknowledged on a prior agenda. And thankfully, based on the pricing, the low bidder is very close to that number. And so there's no reason not to move forward with this at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. That was, I was going to ask Mr. Giuliani to elaborate on it, and just the opportunity to just say thank you to this family again for that incredibly generous donation to make that possible. Yes, I swahatch, Mr. Sizmar.
It's not by this section. Cool, you go.
We're going to go back.
Yeah, thanks.
I know.
Okay.
We have to go back to this after the vote.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for the curriculum and instruction, Item Number 1?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Second, second by Mrs. Becker. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sizmar to please start the discussion.
On curriculum?
On curriculum. You didn't have a discussion?
No, just one flag student.
Oh, you didn't have a discussion?
No, no, it was, it was a point of order for the
There you go. It's been a long wait.
That's my discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate your discretion. Okay, any other discussion then? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, which I believe relates me to financial services. She's like, yes. Okay. Is there anything in Items 1 through 18 that needs separating out? No, then I will ask for a motion for Items 1 through 18 on financial services. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Carrangelo. And I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you've all seen it, we're thinking that the family at Lawrence Brook, I just wanted to make sure that you saw, we also had, the Weber family gave a gift of a sound family gave a gift of the soundboard for our incredible drama club, number eleven. Their senior Joshua Weber just graduated. And also, I was excited to see that our high school video producers club won first place for "Don't Drink and Drive Dangerously."
Right.
Is there any other discussion on this section? Mr. Winston?
Mr. Juliana, can you add a little color to number thirteen? I was always thrilled to see a two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-dollar grant coming through regarding, it looks like adult basic skills, English literacy, civics education, and hey, free money's good money. So would you like to tell us a little bit more about that?
Well, this is adult basic ed, English as a second language. We've had this grant for, my goodness.
Long time.
I must say, over thirty years.
Yeah, correct.
That we've been participating either individually as a district or as part of the Middlesex County Adult Education Consortium. It's a great program, and Dr. Valeski in the superintendent's remarks earlier also talked about one of the aspects regarding the staff that participated in ESL programs, which was very successful and in offshoot of this. So it's a great program for the community.
Good stuff. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, for the same item thirteen, there's two different numbers. The first one is Brunswick's share of this grant application is two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-one-forty-five, and on the second page comparatively is Brunswick's share of twenty-twenty-two grant, two-two-two-forty-five-thousand. What's the difference between these two numbers?
The difference is that the two-forty-five was the twenty-twenty-two grant share, so it shows that there's an increase of approximately fifty thousand dollars.
So the two-ninety-four, one-forty-five is for twenty-twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the item number five?
I'm glad I knew the answer to that.
So when I review this handout, there's multiple items classified as unbudgeted item. So what this, how those large numbers are not budgeted at the beginning of this year, and then come up now at this moment?
Which item are you referring to?
Number five. The budget revision for the month of May.
Are you looking at the attachment?
Yes, attachment.
You're really gonna test me tonight?
Yo, here.
Yo?
Mr. Yo.
So we use a few simple categorizations to explain what the purpose is for the transfer. We have, so it may be that unbudgeted may not have been the appropriate terminology, it's really exceeding the amount that was originally budgeted for those costs. We have, for example, replacement flags for the schools that were listed. We have lead testing, lead and water testing, that's mandated, that was mandated by the state, that exceeded the amount that we originally had in the budget. So those are a couple of the examples that would explain what those, what those are. Trying to think of one other here, that's a three-hundred-dollar amount.
Yeah, the custodial service, the unbudgeted twenty-four thousand.
Right, and that's related to the, while it's listed as, the account description is custodial services, but if you look at the bold below, it's really flags and supplies. So those are flags and supplies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, this is a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll? With Mrs. Gwass included, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries, bringing us to one item for food services this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Hong. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Bringing us to human resources, do we need anything separated out, one and two? No, then I will ask for a motion for Items One and Two on our human resources agenda. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. He's like, he's mouthing his name to me. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Is there anything that needs separated out for one through seven on student services?
Oh, we have staff development.
Oh, staff development.
Oh, see?
Oh, that was an, that was an add-on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 this one's his fault.
My apologies.
Okay, just one item?
Just one item.
May I please have a motion for the one item under staff development this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Question. At this point, we need to hire someone to do what to the schedule for Hammer Schul.
It is a, it is a Genesis consultant, so that we can finalize some things in the schedule, but part of this too will be a training of the existing administrative team who'll be involved in scheduling, so this won't be a recurring request of the board. But it's the uniqueness of creating the fifth, sixth grade schedule at Hammer Schul this year only.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
One, okay, Mr. Sizmar, and abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Now, may I please have a motion for Items One through Seven under student services?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by, was that Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese, okay, is there any discussion on human, student services this evening? Mr. Hong?
See, last meeting, we approved thirty-one students for out-of-district placement, adding the mass. The cost for those thirty-one students is more than three-point-one-million dollars. This time again, we are going to approve eight students for out-of-district placement. The cost is close to six-hundred-thousand dollars. Combined for this thirty-nine students, we are spending almost four-million dollars. That is very good money. So my question is, what can this board do to help the administration team to keep some or most of those students inside the district to save the very precious budget? That is my concern.
Mr. Hong, and I'll let Dr. Figaro weigh in as well, and with Mr. Juliana, we have had these discussions with Mrs. Soltana, who is the Director of Special Education, about, there is a fine balance. There is, there are some students whose needs are severe enough or unique enough that they cannot be served by East Brunswick Public Schools. For us to do that, the acquisition of human resources, specific human resources, and people specifically trained, and equipment, and space, and transportation would far exceed the need to place that child in and out of district placement. That being said, it is our intention, with as many students as we possibly can, to bring students back to East Brunswick in a least restrictive environment, to have them closer to their families, to be integrated with their general education peers, and to have the East Brunswick experience right here on this campus. So this becomes a very unique case-by-case analysis of what is the best service for the students. And in some cases, you know, you know, parents come in with a strong advocacy that they want their children placed in out-of-district placements. They move to East Brunswick, they know that districts are responsible, once they enroll here, we're responsible, you as a board are responsible for providing that education, but they already know they want their child to go to an out-of-district placement. And Mrs. Soltana, Dr. Figaro, worked very closely with families too, to even analyze that, in some cases, families decide to stay in East Brunswick, they don't go to out-of-district placement. So it's not, it's not, it's very unique, it's very case-by-case basis. Dr. Figaro, you wanna?
Well, yeah, and I also, just to add to that, so the board is aware, these are not new cases, these are students that were already out of district, that we were waiting on their contracts. So these are renewals of contracts, these are not brand-new students that are out of district. And I still think, and Mr. Juliana, you may even have the number, our overall number is quite down from previous years, and for a district of this size, to have the low number of out-of-district students we have is quite exceptional, and again, it's based on the board's support for the resources that we can provide for students in district.
Mrs. Becker?
So years ago, the board at the time made a very conscious decision, based on a discussion, bringing up what you had, what can we do to, wasn't just about the money, it was also about the least restrictive environment and to keep these kids in district, and out of that, started this very conscious decision to do as much within district as we could. A prime example of this, I think, is our autistic program. Before the board and administration made this conscious decision to have a lot of, as many kids stay in district as possible, we had a lot of kids going out of district who are various levels on the autistic spectrum, and we created an attitude, terrific program, that kept so many kids in district. And yeah, it was a cost savings, which is, which is great, but to be able to provide these kids with an experience in their own school district, their kids, their neighbors, to be a part of the least restrictive environment. The administration worked so hard on developing this autistic program that it just made a difference and changed a lot of kids' lives. And I think that we continue to do that to this day, and that, as had been previously articulated, but there are some children whose needs are so specific, they must be addressed elsewhere, and I'm glad that those families live in a district that takes that into consideration and makes sure that they get that out-of-district placement, so.
Yes, I support the idea. We, I understand that it's a legal requirement for us to provide this very critical assessment to those families. So my point is, how can we do, once this board can provide some kind of resource, such as space or whatever, to help those families to use the money more efficiently? I understand how responsible.
Mr. Juliana's gonna join in too.
I was just going to get on to that issue. Part of it, part of it is also space availability, availability of classrooms to open more programs. Dr. Figaro already had noted that these are renewals, so these students have already been out of district. So there's no changing that, but we are, and we continue to keep an eye on new students coming into district that may need services, and what that impact is for our in-district programs, because we do have limited availability of seats. Once we reach those thresholds, where we've maximized the number of students that can be in a particular program, and each special education self-contained program has its own requirements in terms of the maximum number of students, along with square footage requirements, different programs, each student gets different amount of square feet according to the code from the state. But once we reach those numbers and the maximums, there's virtually no more space to open new sections. That means our facilities will be maxed out. So the only way to address that in the future has to do with adding on to facilities in order to bring more programs into the district.
Dr. Figaro, I don't know if it's you I should be thanking, but I'm happy to see after twenty years of the Bears Invitational Wrestling Tournament, that the Lady Bears are adding an invitational of their own this year.
Absolutely, yes. This is actually, I believe, our second year.
Yeah, we started last year.
Yeah, we are very happy about that, very happy about that, and again, thanks to the board's support, Mr. Malta, our wrestling coaches, I'm very excited.
I'm very excited, it says, I saw that new wrestling tournament.
Yeah, it should be somewhat new.
Somewhat new, okay, well.
Yeah.
Newish. Mrs. Gwass?
I had a question about the out-of-district placements, I just wanted to echo what Dr. Figaro had said last meeting, a couple of meetings ago, that this number is low compared to other districts, the comparable sizes. So we are doing a phenomenal job with the space that we have, because space really is such a limiting factor with the way the code is written. But I just wanted to ask, of the students that we're sending out of district, is it predominantly elementary, or is it middle school, or is it high school, or is it just a broad range at this point?
It's a broad range, but I can get more specifics for the board.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. And unless someone's gonna correct me, last but not least, I think we are finally at transportation services, may please have a motion?
One and two.
Second.
Bernie's trying to kill me tonight.
I'm sorry.
For Items One and Two. Mr. Hong, I believe, motioned? You seconded? Mrs. Becker seconded, motioned it, and Mr. Hong seconded it, okay. Is there any discussion on transportation this evening? No, this would be a voice vote, so all in favor? Is it?
Yes.
See, I'm sorry. No, I appreciate that, Bernie is just, you know, I don't know, guys. All right, so I, my apologies, please call the roll.
No, no apologies.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. May I proceed? Just for the confusion, they updated the agenda, and Bernie and I went over it, and he failed to.
I missed a couple.
He did, he missed a few things, so, because I meticulously mark up my agenda, so.
Throw him under the bus.
I, you know, I'm not completely nuts anymore. So now we're up to committee reports, information items, and the good or the cause for the board, and, you know, I don't know, I'm sure you all realize this, our last meeting was before graduation. It feels like forever, and I'm laughing when Megan's talking about the summer, and I'm thinking how far into the summer we've already been, and yet the last time we all saw each other was to bid farewell to our seniors, so. Just, and I know, some of our board members up here, a few of the ones down the other end, had some graduating seniors, and then coming up next year, we have some more, actually. Jeff, you're back-to-back, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, see?
I did think for a second.
It's always that look to the side while you do the rages.
Jeff, when does it end?
Nothing I can do about it.
How many Winstons left?
Left or total?
To go.
To go, that would leave three. Two down, three to go. It's a lot.
It's a lot. You have a lot of students, so just, that's it.
Vicki was just saying she's looking to adopt some more children in the district, so maybe you can make a deal.
I tell my clients I'm good at financial planning, when it came to family planning, not so much. So it's, we did our best, but they're good kids, they're good kids.
It's a blessed day when all the kids get out and get jobs too, so you look forward to that.
Every day I think about that, thank you.
Mrs. Reese?
Just piggybacking on what you said, I just want to say thank you to the administration and the teachers for such a beautiful graduation, it really was, you know, in every respect, it was run very beautifully, it was so meaningful, I'm sure you're right, it was just a beautiful...
It was great.
Heartwarming event, and it's a big job, it's a lot of fine details, a lot of, you I, I appreciate, my family appreciates it, it was a beautiful day.
Congratulations.
In spite of all the things that go wrong behind the scenes, like a bus breaking down the turnpike, yeah.
Well, you guys make it go so seamlessly, there was a bus to replace it right away, and, you know, and.
Bittersweet being back at the arena.
How about nine administrators or ten administrators in an elevator?
Stuck in the elevator.
I'm not sure anybody would've noticed, I think they would've said, let's move on with graduation.
No.
Less speeches.
Yeah.
That's all I was thinking.
We would've missed the green goo and the water bottle.
And congratulations to this year's valedictorian who gave one of the best speeches.
Beautiful, oh my god, beautiful speech. Absolutely.
Yeah, it was nice to hear the kids talking about it as they left. Yes, Mr. Hong.
See, when I look at those young faces passing by, I'm so proud of them, you know, that changed my mind, actually. Before that graduation, I said, I already, I already gave this district sixty years as board member. I spent so much time on every meeting, even before meeting, after meeting, I said, it's done, I'm done, I'm not going to run the reelection. But when I look at these young boys, young girls, they are so happy, I say, changed my mind. And I believe, I believe the time, the effort I invest with those young children is the best interest so far in my life.
Yeah.
So that's why, they changed my mind, I'm going to run reelection again for several years.
Yay. That's nice news.
I, I actually was impressed this year. Every year, you know, you, you watch the students as they come across to shake your hand, and I thought, given the circumstances we've all been through over the past couple of years, since this has been a very difficult year. And I expected, you know, that there'd be some hesitation, there'd be some anxiety even about coming across the stage. And I gotta tell ya, from my perspective, I thought this class was, they appeared to be well-adjusted, back to normal, it was like business as usual again. And it was, I was extremely impressed by our young, our young folks, our graduating class.
Megan, you guys have a tough act to follow next year.
Megan, Megan's up to it, she's up to it.
Mrs. Lacks.
Mrs. Becker. Also, behind the scenes, I'm sure you're all familiar with like watching the Olympics, where a gymnast or somebody will get a rating, and they'll rate various parts of their routine and skill on difficulty. There was interesting rating and ranking of board member skill in handing out diplomas this year. There was, there was, people were rated on form, technique, one-handed, two-handed. I wanted to thank those board members responsible for insta, instigating this, this incredible.
I don't know if you're pulling for compliments, we already said you did it the best, so you were, you were the best.
I was kinda waiting for you to bring that out, you know, but it was an interesting twist, Mr. Winston. You, you are, you are creative and, and show a lot of initiative.
All right.
I just have, just a question, just to break the limit just a little bit. Who is on the ad hoc committee on the board, so I can address my concerns and questions regarding the new high school? Who's, who are the board members that are on that committee that I can address my question?
No, no, I understand, but I'm sorry, what, you wanna address the questions?
So I can send it to the committee? To the committee? For, for clarification on items. Who, who are the board members that were named to that committee?
Well, you can send it if you want, to the ad hoc committee, correct? 'Cause it's something, you're not talking about just the, the members of the board, you're talking about the entire committee.
Well, you, you had mentioned earlier you haven't named them, but I assume the board, the formation is done, right?
The formation, we're sending letters out, that's what I said. The formation, we've, we've compiled the list, Dr. Valeski and I are going to be sending the letters out, that's the next step. But if you have questions.
Wait, so it's, the ad hoc committee wasn't formed yet?
Yes, it's formed. I said that the letters are going out with the invitations to select stakes, well, the variety of selected stakeholders in that committee.
Okay, I'm asking about the representation on the board of education. I assume that there's representation on this board.
There is representation.
And I assume that there's a leader who we can then be sending our inquiries to. Is that true?
For right now, if you'd like to send inquiries to me, that'll be fine.
Well, who's the leader of the committee, you?
If you'd like to send inquiries to me, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to talk to you about them.
President Lacks, please, I'm asking who is on that committee, I, I wanna steer it toward the committee.
I, I just told you, if you'd like, at this point, if you'd like to steer it to me, that'll be fine.
Are you the leader of the committee?
At the moment, yes.
So it hasn't been formed yet? All right, in the motion.
It has been formed, Jeff, but I'm not sure what you're trying to ask. If you have a specific question, you'd like to ask it, then you can ask it. But the committee will function as a whole. So yes, we have members up here that are on this specific committee, but they're only a part of the committee. So I don't feel comfortable saying to you, you should send questions to part of a committee versus an entirely formed committee, if that makes sense to you.
No.
'Cause I'm not sure what.
I appreciate it.
If you have a question to ask, and you'd like to send it to the ad hoc committee, then I will make sure that the full ad hoc committee receives the questions.
So there is no assigned leadership at this time, is that my, is that what I'm gathering? Are you avoiding saying that? Is, is there no assigned leadership at this time?
I'm not avoiding saying that, there is assigned leadership at this time, but again, I don't feel comfortable with questions being posed to an entire committee that you're specifically calling out four members of this board.
So there are four members on? Why is this so cryptic?
It's not cryptic, every committee that we have, Jeff, can have no more than four members, because we, otherwise we break our Open Public Meetings Act. You understand that part of it, correct?
I, I understand all of that.
So, so therefore, when you, when you have a committee, you can only assign up to four members. But as with many of our committees that have outside members in the community, the board members that serve from here are only a part of a, of a committee.
I, I understand.
So my point to you is that I don't feel comfortable saying that you're going to share something or ask questions of part of the committee. If you'd like to have this conversation, continue it, I'm happy to do that, but I, again, I'm not sure where you're trying to go with this.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to go anywhere. And at the last meeting, there was a motion made and passed that by this meeting, there would be a committee named for the ad hoc committee. I am asking you simply for the leader of that committee who would facilitate delivering questions to the committee. It, it was by motion, this isn't me feeling something, this was an actual Robert's Rules and Protocol.
To my knowledge, the motion was to?
Yeah, who are the members on the, on the board members on the ad hoc committee?
You want me to list the board members?
That's who, that's the question.
No, I understand that's the question, but if he's, is, is that your question, and do you just, would you like to know who the four members are, is it?
Have you read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
It's in there, it says right in there that there would be the formation of this committee by this meeting.
Yes, but before you did that, we've also discussed many times over that Dr. Valeski and I have told you at every meeting that this formation has been going forward for some months now.
Yeah.
You asked for that. But if you'd like, okay, so you'd like to know the specific members?
Thank you.
Of the committee?
That'd be great.
The specific members of the committee are Mr. Hong, Mrs. Becker, myself, and Mrs. Gwass.
All right, so now my follow-up question is, how were those four members chosen? If this is the largest spend in East Brunswick's history, which one of these individuals has any financial experience to work through these numbers? As an example, point given, if there was ever a security situation, I certainly would expect Mr. Sizmar to be a part of that. Why? Well, I don't know, he's a career law enforcement officer, served on the Secret Service, and certainly that would lend him to be closer to an expert. Of the four people you just named, it was Mr. Hong, Ms. Becker, who were the other two?
Myself and Mrs. Gwass.
All right, Ms. Gwass, and Ms. Lacks, Lacks. All right, of these four people, talk to me about the qualifications and ability to deliver information to the public regarding what will ultimately be the largest spend in East Brunswick's educational history.
So Mr. Jacoby is not here this evening, but to my knowledge, as the president of the Board of Education, I am tasked with choosing board members to serve on a committee. That is fully at my discretion, Jeff.
I, no, I, I appreciate that, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing your discretion, I'm disputing your decision-making. Almost vindictively, you have a board member with over twenty-five years of financial experience in dealing with this very specific topic, and would you feel comfortable heading up the security committee?
Yes.
You would?
To answer your question, I would, and I will tell you why, Jeff.
Wow, okay.
Because every member of this board, your backgrounds, what you've done, has no bearing on what we are tasked with doing. We are not running, and this is, Mark has a fine resume, but we are not, he is not here to run security. We hire people to do that.
Oversight.
So our jobs here are to make sure that Dr. Valeski is running this district well. You don't have to have, to serve on this board, you don't have to have a background in security, in finances, in, in facilities.
Really?
So, you don't.
You don't think an oversight of, of, of security, we'll stay on that example, you don't think the proper person to deliver oversight on our school's security would, would be somebody on this board different than Mr. Sizmar?
That is not what I said.
Mark, I'm sorry to invoke your name, I'm just using you as an example.
That's not what I said.
You said you would be comfortable heading up the security committee.
What I said is that our jobs as Board of Education members are not to run these specific aspects. So while Mr. Sizmar is incredibly well-qualified in that area, I still would defer to the person we hire. Is he, is, is it a benefit to have him there? Sure, you know, but my point, Jeff, is you don't have to have that. You have educators sitting up here, they're not running curriculum, and they, they may be wonderful and have years and years of background.
I've never used the word running, I'm using the word oversight, you're using the word running. Our job as board members is to offer oversight.
Is the oversight, yes.
That's all, that is what our job, to, using your words, make sure the district, listen, I heard what you said, you said you would be equally comfortable running, say, the security. I've, then, to the public.
As a board member, Jeff.
It is very, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, it, your interruption, it's unfortunate that the public, who will be ultimately discuss, voting on this, probably, should've come to a referendum, does not have the ability to have this vetted and, and overs, and oversight applied to the largest spend in history. I think, with all due respect, Ms. Lacks, you don't need to respond, you stated, and I will simply say that I think you, I, I think you're selling these stakeholders short, I think you owe them more than putting those individuals up.
That's fine, Jeff, you are absolutely entitled to your opinion.
And I think your vindictiveness toward me will ultimately hurt the stakeholders of this district, and once again, that is very unfortunate, thank you very much.
No, no, you, you see, that's the best part, Jeff, see, you don't get to just shut it down. I was respectful and I listened to you. And every time you have brought this up, and I've said to you every time, the reason I did not appoint you to this committee was because you said to me in January, I do not want to be on the facilities committee, I don't want anything to do with it.
This is not a facilities committee, it's an ad hoc committee.
And I said to you that, but I, but personally, I feel, if you ask about where I pull, what my discretion comes from, is that I feel facilities is a very large part of a potential rebuild of our largest school.
Yeah, this was discussed.
So that was why.
This was discussed at the last meeting, and it was determined that this is separate from the facilities, because it does involve a very specific, this was already discussed, you can read back the tape on that, but this, it was, that was brought up, this is part of facilities, and the fact of the matter is, this will be the largest spend without a qualified oversight, and that unfortunately will leave the stakeholders short on proper oversight and scrutiny, like it or not, you know, I, I get it, but that, that is.
Thank you for your opinion, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Mrs. Chu, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, the committee is not a decision-making body, so the oversight is by the full board, so I, I, I'm comfortable that I'll have the opportunity to weigh in.
Yes.
And I'm not an expert, but I'll have the opportunity to weigh in.
Fortunately, you don't have to be an expert.
Yes.
We have the experts. Mr. Sizmar.
I wasn't here last meeting, so I can't say about that discussion, but since we're all having our opinions, if it was something about finance, I would have Mr. Winston on the committee. Things go on in the committee, and there's discussions that go on, and I think he would be able to add expertise that other members don't have. That's my personal opinion, I, I, I respect your position as president, since my name was brought up so many times. Yeah, I, I think, I think it would be foolish to not have me on the security committee having that background. So in my opinion.
Thankfully, you're on it, so that's.
In my opinion, you know, I, I think Mr. Winston would be an excellent addition to that committee, and that's just my opinion.
I appreciate your opinion. I have my own reasons, and they are certainly not vindictive, and just to not get into people's personal businesses, but I will say that I have very valid reasons, if you'd like to discuss afterwards, I will, happy to share them with you. Mrs. Becker, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I hate to always come across like the wise old owl, but someone who has been on every board committee in my twenty-two years, and served as chair as a lot of them, I share the philosophy, I think you said, and Susanna said, that by virtue of being an elected public official member of the Board of Education, every board member is qualified to be on any committee. In terms of oversight, whether it's curriculum, we have an Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and her team, we have one of the best finance departments in the state, in terms of financial oversight. The board, again, I, I agree with, with what Lori said, from the perspective of someone who has served on virtually every committee. We are all eligible, I believe, by virtue of the fact that we are sitting up here, that we were elected. That's, that's the criteria, that's my opinion. Respectfully.
Okay. That's it, I know we would like to keep this party going, but since we have no need for closed session, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Corangelo, Mrs. Becker.
The call, no closed?
Any discuss, I'm so sorry to disappoint you. That's our discussion, no closed, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Have a good night and happy summer.